Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to additionally recognize Brenda and we also have some other guests here all representing the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission. So Brenda obviously is the chair and is also representing the Bermuda District. Kathy Chealy is here also from the Bermuda District. We have Billy Pep from Matoaka and Stuart Broth from Cloverhill. So thank you all for coming out this afternoon, taking time out to be here with us and the board for this annual update. I'm gonna get started with, it's always nice when we're able to come and give our annual update as part of the July meeting because July has historically been designated as National Parks and Recreation Month by the National Recreation and Park Association. This year's theme, you see the logo up there, is Where You Belong. And I really like that in thinking about this presentation or this update to talk to you all because I'm a firm believer that you can't get where you're going if you don't know where you want to go and more importantly, the why behind your making the journey. And I think this Where You Belong is a thematic element I really want to weave into the story I'm gonna tell because what we're trying to do here as a department is to really leverage the value for the community of their recreational time, their assets that they've entrusted us with. So that's physical space as well as the human capital that we put into making these parks and these programs and everything we do really be meaningful for the community. So that message really does, I think, align well with why we are or who we are and why we do what we do. One interlude on our, this is a little bit of a brag slide, but we have our college interns here, but we also as a department have been working with the school system in their work-based learning program. We started this last year very intentionally, as you all probably are well aware. We have a great need for seasonal help and that younger workforce can sometimes be hard to pin down. So we partnered with the work-based learning program and these are paid jobs essentially that we have in all of our different areas. So they're paid as many hours as they're able and willing to work, but they also qualify because they've had to go through the vetting process with their guidance counselor and a sponsoring teacher through a program. So they are getting that academic credit as well. And it's a mix. We've got 13 currently working for us. They're coming from nine high school programs across the county. Some of them are in the technical education realm looking to do, like the gentleman who's working with the sports crew. That may be what he wants to begin doing immediately after. We have a lot of other students that are in a diploma track and they're getting real work experience. And I think on both fronts is a great program because as a parent of young adults myself, I think the academic preparation is great, but there's something to be said for real-world preparation as well. So we're glad to have this program and certainly appreciate all the support we've gotten from our school partners. Another brag slide, you heard the introduction. This is a group shot of the folks at opening day at Daniel Park. One thing I'd like to say before leaving this topic, the recognition greatly appreciated. The why behind what they do, I know we have our friends from Sports and Visitation here, so we do like to roll out a nice welcome mat for our visitors, but the real reason we do this is for our residents. And even this week, as you look outside, we've been, this work group has been working because the youth softball group, the Chesterfield Youth Softball is finishing up their season. The weather is not exactly cooperative, so we are on notice to be able to help them complete their games so that they can finish out the season. So it really is reflective, I think, of what we're trying to do philosophically to be more present in our parks and our park operations when people are out there because the real work for us is out there supporting the activities across the board. So it's not just sports operation, it's making sure that parks are clean, that restrooms are clean. You know, all those fundamental needs are absolutely critical to, again, defining a nice place to belong for our residents. Now I'm gonna dive in a little deeper into kind of where we've been. This has been an ongoing project. It's being led out of Stuart Conex Group, but it's time for us to update our comprehensive master plan. We haven't gotten into the planning piece yet, but last, in the last six months, we wrapped up about a year-long process to go out with the school of government, Wilder School of Government, on a comprehensive citizen survey. It is, was performed by them as a, it is a true probability sample, so it's a representative sample of the population of Chesterfield. We asked a number of questions. It's all posted up on our website. We actually updated our park commission, I think, two meetings ago. I'm gonna give you a couple of quick highlights that I think are relevant to the update before you today. One series of questions we asked was basically to tell, or to tell us how well we're doing on some important metrics. I think the safety piece speaks for itself. I know Brad was here earlier. We work a lot with police because we want to make sure that our parks have a visible presence and what we do in the parks with our community. We want people first and foremost to feel safe. The inclusion piece is also important, Where You Belong. That's a measurement of largely on the programming side and the activities we support. We wanted to get to a question that sort of rated us on how well we're doing in that space. Was pleased with the results there. And then the facility assessment, there was, that's just a sample. We asked a whole host. That was rated on a scale of one to four. I see, and there's some good news and I see some opportunities. The restroom is not where I would like it to be, but that is a concerted effort operationally. But as you'll hear later in my presentation, it's also about making reinvestments into existing infrastructure. So restrooms that are new, a lot of the restrooms we have in our current complement, you know, go back to the original founding of the park. And so it's much easier to have a nicer restroom when it's a little newer and a little refreshed. So you'll hear a lot in my story about reinvesting in our existing assets to recapitalize our parks so that the current generation of residents and park users has a good experience. The next slide, I really apologize, I know it's terrible death by PowerPoint form and you will get this report, but what here, the takeaway from this slide, we asked two series of questions against a whole host of activities and facilities that we provide. And on the left side of the slide and highlighted in green, that's a ranked ordering of activities or types of parks or facilities that we're in the business of working with that residents, again, from that probability sample, said that they regularly participate in. You can see the high one up there at 86% is biking, walking, those things. The right column basically shows an opportunity gap. We asked those same, that same question a little differently. We said, what would you like to do more of if you had more resources, more opportunity? And so the top ranked in terms of participation fall, it's still a high number, but they fall to the lower end of the spectrum when you ask those questions a little differently. The yellow are basically new opportunities for growth. You'll see things in there that are at the top of the want list. So things like summer camps, you know, offering more opportunities in summer camps, getting spray grounds, which we'll talk a little more about those. You know, we don't have any currently. We've got several in the works. You'll see, again, a lower participation, a higher mark in desire. So I put all this out there to just say, we are tracking very closely what we, we want to work for our residents and with our residents. So this is helpful information to make sure that we're staying in the lane that we need to as we, again, make this journey in terms of improving the quality of our park system. And again, I apologize for the bad form. I know it's small, but it's just, it is a very, very interesting story that tells us a lot. So thank you for indulging me.
Dr. Miller, last question.
Just a quick question because I don't know what it is. What is futsal?
Futsal is a form of, it's a touch form of soccer. It basically is a smaller soccer ball, it's heavier.
Okay.
And it's more about ball control. We actually have a futsal, we repurposed some courts, tennis courts at Ben'sley Park. And so it's just a different form of soccer.
Awesome, thank you.
The other one up there is cricket. I thought, found that was fascinating. I mean, participation was under 2%, but the desire was in the teens. So again, it's a measurement of moving into some space and sort of a snapshot of are we going in the right direction? So. Now the fun stuff, and summer is a great, this is, I tell staff all the time, I love to speak before the, at the council orientation because everything we do over, we're closing out our camp program here beginning of August. All told, there's two slides here. These are images of the different camps we offer across a wide variety of programming. When we close the books, we'll have served just over 1,000 kids with a summer camp experience. And everything we do in the summer, I tell these counselors, they are the tip of our spear because everything we do is preparing them to be successful in their contact with these youth. The most powerful experience of all out of all these camps, and we have a whole range of offerings that we offer, is the relationships that they make with their counselors because these counselors are younger, they're a role model, an authority figure, but they're very different in compared to a parent, a guardian, a grandparent, or even a teacher. So it is a very unique experience that we offer. As you saw on the measurement slide, it's an area that we have growth opportunity in. It takes human capital, it takes really that, the why behind what we do and the buy-in. I will say in the top corner, left corner, that's an image from the 4H camp. That's the overnight camp. We take a group, this year it was just about 100 children. They go down to the 4H Center in Jamestown for the week. I volunteered my time. I was a counselor there for the week. I have never been to an overnight summer camp as a child. I didn't have that experience. That's terrible to say, but I had a great time. I learned a lot. I came home on the fourth. The week ran through the Friday. I came back on the fourth with every intention to making it to the Fourth of July event. I was asleep in my chair at about 6 o'clock. So, but again, it is something that is vitally important to what we do to, for our young boys and girls for the summer.
Yeah, just gonna mention, I mean, someone who went to camp every summer, each day is equal to a week. So it's, I knew what you were gonna say, it's like, oh, I came back and I slept for a month. It was like, I don't, yeah, you're gonna be tired.
Cabin counselor with 30 boys between nine and 13.
Yes.
And lights out at 10:00 and I don't think I ever got to sleep before about 1:30.
Yeah, no way. I spent summer as a counselor too, so yes.
But anyway, yeah, thank you. I want to highlight too, and again, this is important to what we do to connect with the community. I know you all have all been out and these activities that we provide really to me is one of the biggest bang for the buck that we get out of our investment in working with the community. It certainly makes good use of our parks as a physical asset and where we find opportunities to connect with the community, that's the space in which we meet in the middle. We've got some tried and true ones up there. This is just a snapshot image. Kite Day was one of our most successful kite days ever. I think we went through about 2,000 kites just like that. That was at River City. We also did the upper left, we instituted our first, it was called the Snowball, Snowman Festival, winter event. Ironically, it was like 65 degrees and it got shortened by a thunderstorm of all things in February, but we still had over 2,000 people show up. And one of the lessons for that, and we've talked about this, we're, you're gonna see more, we want to bring more of these types of events even to River City because it's a great opportunity for the community to come together and have some fun and spend some time together as a family unit. And if you remember again from that poorly formed slide, that was rated very high on what people want. They want to spend time together with their, with their family and friends and this, these are great opportunities. We also did our inaugural, the Outdoor Fest, which was in partnership with the Sports Visitation Group. That's now gonna be benchmarked as a regular event for us. Good Spring Event. We got a lot of families show up out there. And I will say, aside from the February thunderstorm, we, in that span, were blessed with some pretty good weather, which certainly helped. So successful events are, there's a lot of hard work that goes into them, but weather is certainly the most important. Most recently, obviously, we did our long-standing July 4th. The weather, again, I was asleep in my armchair, but the weather was, we had a little bit of weather challenge. It's not unexpected. We still clicked in over 8,000 participants for July 4th. So that's a space that we're very grateful for the support we get to be in, so thank you. The other one, just to touch on, this is a sort of a variation on what we do in the event realm. We obviously do a lot to support historic resources and the narrative of history here in Chesterfield. And we do that largely by helping other organizations that are really kind of in the, in their lane with a particular area, bring their story a little more to life. So again, and Mr. Carroll, I know you, and I think Mrs. Snyder, you came down to the Eppington Spring Festival. Weather was not as cooperative as we would have liked, but we had close to 500 people and it was a collaborative effort. And those are the types of things we want to do more because I tell people all the time, in the history realm, you can tell the, you can share the entire narrative of the history of this country from pre-contact all the way through rural electrification by telling local stories on properties within Chesterfield County. So there is a very local touch to national events and history and timelines that we're well positioned to do. So we are very much trying to bring the groups together and help them perhaps be a little more than they could be in terms of being intentional. So that's a space that, again, where we occupy and we're very grateful for the support we get to be there. This is your subliminal advertising slide, just to mention that, and this is not an exhaustive list, but everything we do, most of the things we do are done in collaboration, so you'll see the Fair Association up there. You know, we are stewards, we manage property, we have human capital to do things, but a lot of times, the community connection, the nexus comes with a group that we work with. And again, not exhaustive, but all of these groups are valued partners in helping to provide, again, that you belong environment in terms of recreational space and leisure opportunities here in Chesterfield County. I'm gonna flip real quickly now and give you all a highlight on some projects. A lot of our narrative, as I know you all are well aware, is built around things that we're doing in the project space. This one is one, again, thanks especially to the board for the support and the initiative. Again, one of our partner groups sort of said, hey, why don't you, and helped us get there. And we now are up to 40 AED units that are publicly, they're, you know, out in the weather, accessible for anybody who needs them. And as you're aware, we had a good story that came, a good outcome that came out of them. So we're very appreciative of that, again, the community and you all as elected leadership, helping us be in a space to make our parks a safer place to be. A couple of other planning level projects we have. This is a system-wide assessment, the checkmarks just sort of where we are. We've completed our, our field work and we are waiting for the consultant team to sort of give us the final report. And then there is a public engagement component that will be led by Six Wheel Consulting. It basically is a study to measure how well our access within our park facilities are. And again, it's not just the measurement that matters to us, it's the spirit behind what it means to be inclusive. And so we do, we are touching not just, again, on those measurements, but on, on things like the accessibility of our web presence, how we, how we do our programming, you know, things in those spaces. So that report in its final form will come to you all in some fashion, probably winding up here in the fall. And then the other one, and I know, again, this is, you all are hopefully aware of this, but we have now an annual or requirements contract to be able to retain professional expertise to help us get a baseline condition assessment across our portfolio of built environment. We began with courts and that was, that's a collaborative or a, it's an inclusive assessment. It's 40 locations, it's all of our courts, both within the school system and within the park system. And it's wrapping up, the field work's been done. We are reviewing the initial draft reports. We've got some formatting, things to work through. A lot of the sites, I'll be honest, need some follow-up because we want to go, what we ultimately want to bring to you all out of all these condition assessments is a list from one to whatever that prioritizes how bad the conditions are and what the need is to get that particular facility back up to a like-new condition. And I'll be honest, on the courts, what we've seen is a lot of the courts, particularly at the high schools, it's gonna be a heavy lift to get there. The conditions aren't the greatest and it's not a maintenance problem, it's a capital reinvestment conversation. But again, you can't begin unless you know where you want to go. And so we're trying to flesh this study out to basically give everyone that needs to make these decisions a clear picture of what it's gonna take to get where we all would like to be. Now, some good news. We just opened a couple of parks. We've opened a few more this year. That's the rework or refresh of the little park, neighborhood park at Fernbrook on the right. And then the final phase of Hare Gate, we opened here a month ago maybe. Time is flying by, but, but very well received by the community. What I'm gonna say on these slides, again, and you'll, I'll speak to these in the ongoing projects, we are really focusing on quality. We are focusing on looking at ways we can take existing park land and park resources and reinvest in a way that brings those parks back up to a standard and a level of connection for the community that they want and value. The other thing I'll mention before I transition, you backed these two completed projects out. We've had the Mosley Elementary School Connector Trail, there's, there's been some other ones. I'm gonna speak to Daniel Ironbridge Park here in a minute. We still have 63 active capital projects on the books. So again, thanks to everything you all are doing, that's driven by dollars, and we are very much in the business right now in this moment of time of being defined by taking our park system and finding what we need to do to make sure that the public can really belong there. That means investing in quality, investing in access to park land that hasn't been accessible before. So that is, again, what we are doing and a lot of effort. 63 projects is a lot in the capital realm because each one of those has a lot of complexities. But we love it when we can clip a ribbon. The Diamonds at Ironbridge was a great story for us. Six Field Complex had been long-term lease. When we got it to, the condition was not nearly what we would like. And when it came off of an operating lease, we took about $700,000 in appropriated capital, major maintenance dollars and began a project. And then thanks to you all, it was leveraged against some significant amount of the basically excess tourism revenue to make a $4 million overall investment of that. We're not finished. I'll speak to the next phase here in a minute. But you can see the lower left, that's a before and after of Field 6. I think the quality speaks for itself. And again, that team at the opening, that's a local team, and I will continue to reiterate, it's great that visitors like to be here because they spend money and leave, but they help pay for things that our residents can really benefit for. So it's a pretty simple equation that we're very appreciative for the support we're getting. Current projects underway, and again, I'm not gonna touch on all 63 of them, I'm just gonna give you all a rolling highlight. And I apologize if I miss something that's important to you, but there's a lot going on. Beulah, again, as everybody well knows, it's, it will be the first in the region, the first properly-sized cricket pitch for cricket. It can also be used for other sports. And it's not shown on this slide, but it has a significant community face of it as well. It will be one of our first spray grounds. Mr. Holland has added some capital district improvement dollars to supplement that. So we are, we've got a community face here as well. The majority of the park is actually funded by ARPA with some supplements. We are on schedule. I just had a conversation, the sprigging should happen here probably in the next two weeks. They're wrapping up the irrigation, so the field is gonna open first. The amenity package for the community will be a ribbon cutting for spring of next year. River City Sportsplex, we've got a number of things going on out here. This is all, again, some, a combination of funding sources. This is the actual completion of the field portfolio. Under construction, those fields will be done and playable before Thanksgiving. We're trying to really get them in before we have the big Thanksgiving field hockey tournament. It's four new fields, some additional parking in the back, and it's not shown on this graphic, but it also includes front Field 6, I believe it is, that was originally built just for football. It'll be expanded out, so it's a true 360 by 180 dimension field for full soccer or any of the other sports that are on there. That's just one of many things that are going on at this location, but that one is actively under construction and well underway. Excuse me. This is another great example of some reinvestment. This is, again, at Huguenot Park. This is a Katie and Friends, Katie and Friends Playground was one that I know my kids grew up on. It's tremendously popular with the community. It was fundraised with a, you know, Katie's mom, Katie is now 32, I believe, still likes to swing, but we're coming through and between our major maintenance dollars supplemented by some of the district improvement funds, we're making almost a million dollars worth of investment in replacing all the equipment. We're keeping all of the things that the volunteers put in back in the day, but giving the park a complete facelift. And the equipment's been ordered, expecting to put up the park closed for renovation sign probably middle of August, which is just around the corner. Hope to have a ribbon dedication later in the fall to reopen it up for the community. Just as a measure of popularity, when we did the survey that I mentioned first, you know, they had to go through a lot of exercise to get to about 1,000 as a representative sample. We put out on social media, give us your feedback about this park, the importance of this park and what you'd like to see. I think we had 600, 700 responses, just like that. So a real testament to the popularity of this park, so we're excited about it. Cog Bell Park, brand new park, ARPA project, community park. It's on your consent agenda tonight for a contract award, just over $3.3 million. Again, ARPA dollars. This park has been long awaited by the community. I was not here, but I know there was a very long community involvement process, so we're glad to get this one into production. And again, with your approval and a notice to proceed, be able to do ribbon cutting here next summer. This one is a very exciting one. This is back at River City. This is, we're calling it the Park at River City. We certainly are open to suggestions, but the idea here is a simple one. The area where the concert venue is currently located is gonna be repurposed for, we've budgeted about $9 million in conceptually what you see up here. They're not the best renderings, but it gives you the idea. It's a destination play area for multi-generational play area. It's built around full principles of inclusivity and it's gonna have a spray ground feature as well as multiple ages, a pavilion for people to, for multi-generation to congregate. Dollar for dollar, again, one of the great stories in knowing where we are and who we are is by putting it on this dirt at River City, we've got $9 million, most of which, almost all of which can go into the actual play equipment and the development. We don't have to spend a lot of money on infrastructure, building a road, building a parking lot, bringing utilities to the site because we're already in a location where all that's provided. And at this location, the value, it certainly will help put this complex a little more on the map, even more so with the, within the tourism market. But it now gives a lot of people locally a reason to be in this space even if their child is not playing soccer or things like that. So we're very excited about this one. This one is in the sign-off stage for permitting, should come to you all for a contract award. We'll bid it here, a month maybe out. So November meeting, December meeting. So, November meeting, December meeting for a contract award and get going in the spring. Phase two, again, the Diamonds at Ironbridge. This, we opened the fields, very nice, but we've got funding again out of our, that additional allocation to complete the project, so to speak, which includes a wrap to give a more signature appearance to the one field there, stadium setting, as well as a restroom. And again, when I mentioned restrooms, our new model, fully compliant condition so that you're not walking into a restroom when it's 95 degrees and it's hot in there as well. We've got some new standards. One of the things we're doing for some of our restrooms is going to the individual stall model where, I don't know if you've been in a state park, but that allows, instead of going into a men's, women's, or unisex, they're individual stalls. So, everybody goes into a private restroom. That way, if you have a servicing need, you can take one offline without closing down the whole restroom. So, again, what we're trying to do is reinvest with quality. River City, also, some additional funding that we had appropriated from years previous is Field 6 Championship Field. It also includes addressing some longstanding erosion issues that we've had there on the hillside, as well as some spectator amenities. So, again, trying to differentiate this complex for local as well as visitation use. Bond money, we have almost nine, well, almost $10 million between some bond and general fund to invest in Horner Park, it's a great hidden resource. We are actually, on the left is the concept for a new softball complex, but we also have earmarked out of appropriated major maintenance dollars, a million dollars to address the current field issues out there. And the bond project also funds, I've just shown the active component, but there is a community component as well. So, another dog park, trails, picnic pavilions, playgrounds, all of those things that are important to a wider span of users. Again, appropriated and in initial design development.
Archery as well?
Yes, sir, archery. Again, wanted to touch real quickly because earlier you saw that passive recreation is also very important. I didn't want to cheat that. We have a lot of things going on in that realm too. Just a couple of quick highlights. The Greenwood property down on the Appomattox, right down in Ettrick Village, we're finishing the closing process on that. We have a million dollars in appropriated funds to begin that development. So, I would imagine, at your pleasure, we're ready to go out and to begin some community conversations on SIA substantial in accord and then ultimately a master plan for that site to move pretty quickly. We are, I think, finalizing what's needed to progress at Midlothian Mines to redo the headstock, and then are also working again collaboratively with those partner groups to have some discussions about future beyond just that reconstruction. We're in the space down at Point of Rocks. That is part of our access portfolio to open that site up for public visitation, but we also have some additional appropriation to take the Stracken House there that you see in the center and do a restoration so that it is taken from its current mothballed status up to a level where it can be actually opened up for tours. And then on the right, just a reminder, we're also very cognizant of the need to improve river access, and we've got a lot going on in that space. It's tough graphically to show it, but we've got between the bond money for the Falling Creek Park, as well as the Dominion Energy Consent Dollars. We are well on our way to making improvements where Falling Creek comes into the James River. That is actually what you see on the right. I know it's hard to see, but it is an engineered, about a 30% engineered drawing for what the boat access would look like that. It's a keyhole slip, you can see in blue there. So, when you launch a boat, you're not in the river, you're in slack water, and it's got paved parking and circulation. And then again, we have another park component that's funded by the bond that'll take the bluffs and turn them into a more passive, you know, passive picnicking type park. So, a lot of work in that space. The other access projects off of the bond include opening up for the first time Providence Road Park, Atkins Acres, which is just over in the Dale District behind the airport, as well as the Swift Creek Conservation Area, which is where Swift Creek comes into the Appomattox. It's a beautiful piece of property, opens up a tremendous amount of potential for birding, bird watching, and walking or hiking, as well as paddling access. Touch on real quickly, the Lower James. This is now an amalgamation, a lot of conversations, I know as you all as a board are aware, we've sort of taken a step back and said, okay, we have the Dutch Gap Conservation Area, we have the, you know, EDA property on the other side, we've got Henricus as a unit, we know Dominion is changing the landscape down there. Let's go ahead and think of it all in its entirety as a comprehensive unit and make some best decisions about the overall property instead of piecemealing things going forward. We know we need a road that is under design, we know we need to provide access, boating access, that's funded and under design. We know we need to address the issues that Henricus has with the impact of the Dominion Project. But overall, if you look at it, we're almost 1,100 acres of publicly owned land down there. It's got conservation value, it's got historical significance, it's a beautiful piece of property. And so, this slide is just to say, we are now comprehensively looking at what we can do down there and obviously keep you all well apprised of milestones as we move down that path. Real quickly, these are just some, they're major projects for us. We've, again, at Robius, this is the home of Huguenot Little League. We are completing this year, or will complete this year, a complete field renovation. We've done it two at a time, but we also are finishing up a replacement for their restroom building, which is, I think, original to the park, so it's vintage 1980, it's in dire need of some, it's basically a scrape and rebuild. And we also have, and again, a variety of funding sources. Graphically there in the top left, we have ARPA dollars that are being used to provide a spray ground at Benzley Park. The athletic field there is also being lighted, the poles are here, the electrician is juggling other work, but that will, the field will be lighted before we get to the end of August, and the spray ground again will be a spring/summer of next year opening. We have in the appropriated FYI capital, $800,000 line item to do Ettrick Village Park, which is the front of the school there. It's a placemaking park, it's a plaza, it's a signature area for the community. And then the bottom two slides on the right, we, Lowe's Complex, if you all are familiar with that, off of Route 10, had been under a long-term lease with the Strikers. They have relinquished that lease, and so now we are moving in with ARPA dollars to make some needed improvements. A restroom and parking are top of the list. Those dollars will be encumbered in that project underway by fall. And then on the left, as I mentioned, with appropriated major maintenance dollars, we've got two restroom projects we've identified as prioritization. These are, again, complete scrape off and replacements. The one at Dodd Park and the one at Huguenot Park are both in, well past their usable life and need to be replaced. And then finally, I'm going to end up on a great story that I'm excited about, Rockwood Park. You know, I've got, that park is, I tried to find, we tried to find some vintage slides. That park was the first park, it opened in 1976, 77? 75. And so, it's coming up on 50 years. It'll be 50 years in July. And we've allocated a million and a half dollars in appropriated major maintenance to get in there and do some work. And again, just like Daniel, it's a great opportunity for, you know, anything else that we can bring down the pipeline as we are, you know, in that space. It's kind of like starting to paint a room and realizing you need to replace the molding and, you know, you can really get into it. But the park is heavily used, certainly the success of the Latino farmers market has been wonderful, and we have the opportunity, there's just so much going on in that park. Again, this is an opportunity, a moment in time for us to make, to really make this park come back and ready for the next 50 years. So, that is what I have for you all, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Questions, comments, supervisors?
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, I was going to talk to the interns, he has one of the coolest jobs. And, you know, thank you for the work that you're doing. It's funny because I was making a list of the things I'm hoping he catches, and you just checked them right off my list. Thank you for the hard work you're doing, your staff, it's just incredible. It makes Chesterfield such an incredibly quality place to live. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Other supervisors, other comments? Yes, Snyder, please.
So, I was at the Fourth, at the Fourth of July thing, and I got there early and got on lockdown, and so I had the fun of hanging out with your staff and had an awesome time. Just sitting down, talking with them, I helped them put together some pinwheels, they're just like, oh my gosh, you're going to help. It was great, just talking with them. They have such enthusiasm. I helped Sharon and Marley put together the arch that got blown over during the storm. It was just awesome just to participate in the excitement of you guys and what, I mean, they're all, like I said, very enthusiastic about what they're doing, so something is being done right, obviously, so.
Thank you, supervisor. Anyone else? Miss Engel.
So, there's obviously a lot of work being done around the whole county, very interesting everything in my district. I know you had a meeting earlier today with the citizen, and I just wanted to read the first sentence of his email to me. "While the plan for the ramp and parking is actually very good, Neil and Stuart really listened and made changes." That's a pretty big statement from the person, so appreciate all your hard work, everything you're doing in all the areas in the county, especially in the Bermuda District.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
I think it was yesterday in a meeting, I told you what your staff and what your department is doing is amazing. People really don't realize, and that was a great summary of many of the things you're doing, but people don't realize just how big Chesterfield County is and how big our park system is and how much it's utilized. And I think, you know, we did some informational videos, I think, two years ago, trying to push out to the community about all the parks that are available for people. And I still get people that send me emails like, "We don't have enough parks." So, again, your staff's doing a great job, and I think that there's a lot of great things coming, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. I just want to thank you for being here, Neil. I appreciate you covering ADA compliant, I think that's so very important, and I applaud you for the high school interns and college interns to earn and learn. I applaud that, let's continue to do that well. And I look forward to hearing an update on the bathroom situation, get it from 2.7 to, let's get over three by the next time we see it. So, anyway, good go, great job, outstanding work for the county, tremendous job. So, thank you so much for being here, and we appreciate your presentation. Thank you.